Good morning. It is Wednesday, November 29, 2017, 9:00 in the morning and we're here in the Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street Northeast for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. Welcome, everyone. We start our meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item is always public comment, quite often, and most of the time, no one takes advantage of it, but this morning, we do have someone. Michael Johnson's here to talk about streetlights and traffic control. Michael, will you come over to the side there and tell us what you'd like to?
Good morning. It's been a while. It's nice to see John again. Lighting out in East Salem, I know through the Public Service District, you hear about this some time of the time, but this is just an update that lights are coming to a portion of McClay, southeast, east of Hough Middle School. Lights are coming to a portion of State Street. There'll be some lights put on Shenandoah, lights on parts of Connecticut. Street lighting districts have been installed and are operational on metal lawn. And there's one coming to Morgan and Midway, which are tucked back in behind the Target store. One other note for you for this morning, though. At the corner of Connecticut and McClay-Ricky, the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association called upon the city of Salem to install a turn signal in all four directions. Usually, working with transportation with the city of Salem, it's taken a great deal of time. They responded and did it within four weeks, which was astounding. Of course, one of the things that's happening is there is a whole lot of housing going in in East Salem. Amazon is coming into East Salem. An office park is coming into East Salem. And the traffic on McClay-Ricky is just going to increase. One of the issues that the neighbors have out in the area is the amount of traffic and the speed of traffic. We covered that in our get-together with you in March of 2013. The neighbors have not let up the drumbeat or trying to find a way to slow traffic down. And it's something that we'll want to talk about more at a later time, but just as a reference. The other thing, and this has nothing to do with the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association, Marion County Master Gardeners through the Extension Service now have all of their workshops, including grapes, will be available for sign-up online at marioncomga.org. You just go in there, you'll find the calendar for all the, especially the pruning activities coming up in January and February. If you wanted to sign up for grapes, you'd go in there and you'd find the one on January 27th, and you would click on it. You would sign up, give your name and your email address, and bang, you are in. And same for everybody else. If you want to learn how to prune a grape, you come see the Master Gardeners on June 27th. Uh, June, excuse me, July 20th. January, I'll get there. July 27th. With that, I'm pretty much done until the next session. I don't know if you have any questions about the lighting that's been installed or not.
Michael, actually, I do, because I'm not quite sure. That goes back and forth between city and county. Has the county been as helpful, or is there something we need to do in that area?
In working with the Public Works, there's been a change in leadership, so there's been a learning curve, but things are going well. PGE, however, we first submitted a number of either petitions or orders to Public Works under their, under the Public Works, how they're structured, beginning on May 4th and the last one went in on May the 25th. And it's taken PGE more than six months to respond, I mean, by getting lights. Typically, it's within just a few weeks. When we met in July and you approved the lighting districts for metal lawn and for Midway, the order was signed shortly after that, and it still took another three months for PGE to respond, which is unusual. I don't know what the issue is. If there's some way to encourage PGE to work a little faster, the neighbors who have, again, been calling us, "Where are my lights?", that, any help is much appreciated.
All right. We might know someone to talk to. All right. One last question.
Yes.
If, just anecdotally, are people appreciating it? When you say that they're calling, asking where they are, it says they want them, but once they're there, do you get some indications of?
Oh, yes. These are people that have been talking about being in the dark, especially on McClay. One of the gentlemen who lives in the area took me out one evening about 9:30. This was in the summer. Maybe it was quarter to 10:00. Anyway, it was dark. And we're driving down one of the streets and we're coming up to the intersection with McClay. And he's telling me about running into kids who are on their skateboards or in their dark clothing. And I'm saying, okay, you know, I've got the headlights on, I can see. We come up to the intersection.
That still surprised you.
And somebody was there, and had I not been really attentive, yes, we may have hit them. But it is very dark. But it is coming. PG tells me it's coming, but it's just taken an extremely long period of time compared to how they normally respond.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
And John will be happy. Lights are coming to East Salem.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Our next item's a presentation. Oregon Fair Association Awards. They went to Marion County, the Marion County Fair in particular, Tamara Getch and lots of others.
Tamara Getch, Director for Community Services. And I'm joined this morning with lots of friends and colleagues with the, associated with the Marion County Fair. We're gonna, we have two awards that we want to talk about today that the Marion County Fair received this for its past year's fair through the Oregon Fair Association and the honors that we received. We submitted five applications for consideration, and of those five, we received two awards. And the first one I want to talk about is our fair website. And before I go any further into that, perhaps I can have those that are joined with me this morning introduce themselves. Dylan, who is our chair?
Dylan Wells, the Marion County Fair Board Chair.
Jill Ingles, I'm the fair coordinator.
Heidi DeCosta, I'm the vice chair.
So we have, up on the screen for you today is an example, or is the actual website for the Marion County Fair. This submission showed to the selection committee the fair website and just really showed how we were able to take a county website and put a link on our county website that leads directly to this exterior website that allows people to have a little bit more pizzazz, if you will, taking it a little bit away from more of a government structure. And Jill, the reason why Jill is here is because she is, and Dylan, did a huge part in making this possible. Jill and Dylan both, I think, had the vision of what could be for the Marion County Fair's website. And you can see Dylan's kind of driving for us across the website. You can see that it's a lot different than a county website that has a lot of information bars. It's more picture-driven, has really more activity focus, and I think it has proven to be very easy to use from our customers. Jill, Heidi, or Dylan, have anything to add?
We did have a wonderful contractor help us out and did all the heavy lifting on the programming of the website, and everything came out well. We were able to purchase tickets online in the website. It's also mobile-friendly, so people on the fairgrounds were able to look up information. We also had a lot more fillable forms on the website this year, instead of printing out a sheet, filling it in, and sending it into the community service department to do something with. We also were able to integrate a new programming for open class. We have shut it down, so people can't enter yet for open class or public competitions, as it's now called. And we got quite a bit of people to go online and enter into the fair. And we, I'll toss it over to Heidi, who is the head of the public competitions, to kind of give us some numbers on how well we did there.
Sorry, it's number? Okay. Well, it was much better this year with electronic. Got a lot of really great feedback from people. We've got a lot of millennials out there that are happy about electronic. As far as numbers go, we did about the same as we did the year before, which is about, I believe there is about 150 or so that entered. And being that it was a Fourth of July weekend, that was actually fantastic that we got that many, but I believe this year will be even better.
And I think the only thing I would add is that, as you see, there are a lot of moving parts to a fair. And so having a website that can accomplish being a public face and be a marketing tool, as well as operationally allowing our vendors to apply, the vendors can look up policies and rules, people can enter and participate, it has a lot of moving parts. So it was a lot of different movements to try to make sure it gets all in there. And still, the face of it should be what the public sees and what attracts them to come to the fair.
I would add one thing. We have, Denise has made our public competition book into one piece, so they will no longer be divided. So we're pretty excited about that, because I think it will make it so much user-friendly, and that way, all of the rules will be right there. I'm excited about that.
And this was about a two-year project that came into action this year, so it was great to see.
Any questions about the website?
No, it's amazing. Love it.
All right. So I'm gonna ask us to do a transition and maybe pull a couple of chairs. Heidi, if you could come over here, and then our staff and Boys and Girls Club?
We received another award as we're piling all the partners into up front here from the Oregon Fairs Association. Now, every county in Oregon is a part of the Oregon Fairs Association. So this award is the Outstanding Youth Project Award for the Oregon Fairs Association, and it was the Marion County Fair STEAM program that we put on at the fair. We have, I think I'll try to let them introduce themselves. We have quite a few partners.
Karina Lee, Executive Director of the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation.
And Sue Bloom, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club Salem, Marion and Polk Counties.
Edgar Romero, Director of Program Services for the Boys and Girls Club here in Salem.
I'm Heather Nab, and I led the STEAM stage for Salem Kaiser Education Foundation.
And then we also have Kathleen back here. She is on the Marion County Farm Bureau Board, which I am also here representing. I am the newly-elected president for the Marion County Farm Bureau. And we were partners in helping getting this program going. We had 16 questions around the fairgrounds to kind of have a treasure hunt of trivia facts. And then we also had the Marion County 4-H Extension Service did a paint-by-number going on out the fair. So you came up and you got a number, and that number told you what color to paint on the big mural. So you went around and painted number two was orange. We had a STEAM stage going on. Salem Kaiser did a whole bunch of different activities and all that. Karina, or explain some of the things they did on that stage.
Heather?
When we were, I just have to first say that when we were invited to participate in the committee, it was great, and we were brainstorming what was up. And I did this, saying, "Well, let's have a STEAM stage." And they said, "Great, you can put it on." But I want to let Heather, who did a lot of the activities with hundreds and hundreds of kids.
Okay. So some of the fun things we did, we made DIY lava lamps with the kids. We made natural paintbrushes, and they made kind of natural landscapes. So the whole idea of the stage was to incorporate science, math, or science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So we tried to do and combine elements of all of that throughout the day. So we focused on S for science, T throughout the day, each of Friday and Saturday. So, yeah, it was tons of fun. We had water balloon launchers out there, measuring how the distance is for how far people could launch their water balloons. We got pretty wet. I think I was the target at one point with some success. So we had a lot of fun. Jill was absolutely amazing as a coordinator, super helpful. So, yeah, we'd love to do it again. It, I think, brought the fun out of STEAM, which is a huge push in education right now. So it was a great opportunity.
And I'll defer to Edgar, as he was the brainchild around the activities at the fair for the Boys and Girls Club.
So this year, we focused on drones. We acquired about four or five different drones here at the Boys and Girls Club in Salem. And we also acquired 12 Lego drones. So the kids at our station got to build Lego drones, and then crash them, and then rebuild them again. So it was really cool. The drones went about 12 feet in the air, and then they'd fall straight down. So we had a lot of kids come through. Parents were actually staying there with their kids and trying to make it work. It was a really cool project, so, yeah, we had a great time.
And the drones is just a portion of a larger middle school Be Great By Eight program that we have. So it was a great opportunity for us to bring our middle school program out to the county fair. So we appreciate, truly appreciate the opportunity and look forward to doing it again.
Tamara, do you have anything to add?
I just also want to mention thankfulness to our partners. This wouldn't be possible without our partners. What wasn't mentioned was the bazillion books that were also distributed at the fair. People's eyes were just wide with amazement when they were out there, just, yeah, take a book, take three books, share them with friends. And they were like, really? These books are like new. I can have this book. And you just see people with pride, and their parents are excited that their kids could leave the fair with something that didn't cost a penny. Once they got through the gate, they were able to enjoy that. And so that was a nice thing for us to do as well, and it wouldn't have been made possible without our great partners. The Farm Bureau also has really helped to make this possible because providing resources and support and connections. STEAM was mentioned, the acronym. A not only stands for arts at our fair, it also stands for agriculture, because agriculture is a huge part of our fair, and it is really one of the main contributions that we provide to our participants who attend our fairs, really education around what goes into our local agricultural community, whether it be raising an animal or doing a project, maybe it's doing something like, something like the Master Gardeners do from farm to table, et cetera. We really wanted to embed that into our project. My goal has always been to make our fair through this STEAM project the largest classroom in the county, and I think we're well on our way to making a mark on that. And we just hope that not only does our projects grow, but we hope that our partnerships continue to grow. And we're just really thankful for the success that we've had to date. And did the Farm Bureau, did you want to add anything?
No, no. Dylan did all this work.
Great. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, first of all, for getting the two awards, and thank you for coming. This was really great. I didn't want it to be just like you got the awards, you know, thank you very much, but really to get a flavor of what went into it. And this presentation this morning really accomplished that. So thank you all for being here, for the work that you do.
Yeah.
Do you want to take pictures? Okay, do you have?
Dylan, I just have a question for you.
Sure, go ahead.
How did you take out John as president of the Marion County Farm Bureau?
It was tough. I just kept feeding him donuts and cider, and I think, kind of in a comatose.
And he fell asleep.
Yeah.
Congratulations on that, by the way.
Thank you.
That's good to know.
So, let me get all of our STEAM partners. Is she on her way? So Jolene's gonna come down with her fancy camera. So, yes. No, we just called her. So let's wait two seconds. So why don't we get, we could get kind of positioned here and hold it down in just a minute. So do you want like the STEAM in one and the? Yeah, that'd be great. Website in the other? All right, so we're just waiting for a moment. Ah, sure, I'll set a camera. Is this official? Probably not.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Our next item's a presentation. Oregon Fair Association Awards. They went to Marion County, the Marion County Fair in particular, Tamara Getch and lots of others.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tamara Getch, Director for Community Services. And I'm joined this morning with lots of friends and colleagues associated with the Marion County Fair. We're gonna, we have two awards that we want to talk about today that the Marion County Fair received this for its past year's fair through the Oregon Fair Association and the honors that we received. We submitted five applications for consideration, and of those five, we received two awards. And the first one I want to talk about is our fair website. And before I go any further into that, perhaps I can have those that are joined with me this morning introduce themselves. Dylan, who is our chair?
Dylan Wells, the Marion County Fair Board Chair.
Jill Ingles, I'm the fair coordinator.
Heidi DeCosta, I'm the vice chair.
So we have up on the screen for you today is an example, or is the actual website for the Marion County Fair. This submission showed to the selection committee the fair website and just really showed how we were able to take a county website and put a link on our county website that leads directly to this exterior website that allows people to have a little bit more pizzazz, if you will, taking it a little bit away from more of a government structure. And Jill, the reason why Jill is here is because she is, and Dylan, did a huge part in making this possible. Jill and Dylan both, I think, had the vision of what could be for the Marion County Fair's website. And you can see Dylan's kind of driving for us across the website. You can see that it's a lot different than a county website that has a lot of information bars. It's more picture-driven, has really more activity focus, and I think it has proven to be very easy to use from our customers. Jill, Heidi, or Dylan, have anything to add?
We did have a wonderful contractor help us out and did all the heavy lifting on the programming of the website, and everything came out well. We were able to purchase tickets online in the website. It's also mobile-friendly, so people on the fairgrounds were able to look up information. We also had a lot more fillable forms on the website this year, instead of printing out a sheet, filling it in, and sending it into the community service department to do something with. We also were able to integrate a new programming for open class. We have shut it down, so people can't enter yet for open class or public competitions, as it's now called. And we got quite a bit of people to go online and enter into the fair. And we, I'll toss it over to Heidi, who is the head of the public competitions, to kind of give us some numbers on how well we did there.
Well, it was much better this year with electronic. Got a lot of really great feedback from people. We've got a lot of millennials out there that are happy about electronic. As far as numbers go, we did about the same as we did the year before, which is about, I believe there is about 150 or so that entered. And being that it was a Fourth of July weekend, that was actually fantastic that we got that many, but I believe this year will be even better.
And I think the only thing I would add is that, as you see, there are a lot of moving parts to a fair. And so having a website that can accomplish being a public face and be a marketing tool, as well as operationally allowing our vendors to apply, the vendors can look up policies and rules, people can enter and participate, it has a lot of moving parts. So it was a lot of different movements to try to make sure it gets all in there. And still, the face of it should be what the public sees and what attracts them to come to the fair.
I would add one thing. We have, Denise has made our public competition book into one piece, so they will no longer be divided. So we're pretty excited about that, because I think it will make it so much user-friendly, and that way, all of the rules will be right there. I'm excited about that.
And this was about a two-year project that came into action this year, so it was great to see.
Any questions about the website?
No, it's amazing. Love it.
All right. So I'm gonna ask us to do a transition and maybe pull a couple of chairs. Heidi, if you could come over here, and then our staff and Boys and Girls Club?
We received another award as we're piling all the partners into up front here from the Oregon Fairs Association. Now, every county in Oregon is a part of the Oregon Fairs Association. So this award is the Outstanding Youth Project Award for the Oregon Fairs Association, and it was the Marion County Fair STEAM program that we put on at the fair. We have, I think I'll try to let them introduce themselves. We have quite a few partners.
Karina Lee, Executive Director of the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation.
And Sue Bloom, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club Salem, Marion and Polk Counties.
Edgar Romero, Director of Program Services for the Boys and Girls Club here in Salem.
I'm Heather Nab, and I led the STEAM stage for Salem Kaiser Education Foundation.
And then we also have Kathleen back here. She is on the Marion County Farm Bureau Board, which I am also here representing. I am the newly-elected president for the Marion County Farm Bureau. And we were partners in helping getting this program going. We had 16 questions around the fairgrounds to kind of have a treasure hunt of trivia facts. And then we also had the Marion County 4-H Extension Service did a paint-by-number going on out the fair. So you came up and you got a number, and that number told you what color to paint on the big mural. So you went around and painted number two was orange, and we had a STEAM stage going on. Salem Kaiser did a whole bunch of different activities and all that. Karina, or explain some of the things they did on that stage.
Heather?
When we were, I just have to first say that when we were invited to participate in the committee, it was great, and we were brainstorming what was up. And I did this, saying, "Well, let's have a STEAM stage." And they said, "Great, you can put it on." But I want to let Heather, who did a lot of the activities with hundreds and hundreds of kids.
Okay. So some of the fun things we did, we made DIY lava lamps with the kids. We made natural paintbrushes, and they made kind of natural landscapes. So the whole idea of the stage was to incorporate science, math, or science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So we tried to do and combine elements of all of that throughout the day. So we focused on S for science, T throughout the day, each of Friday and Saturday. So, yeah, it was tons of fun. We had water balloon launchers out there, measuring how the distance is for how far people could launch their water balloons. We got pretty wet. I think I was the target at one point with some success. So we had a lot of fun. Jill was absolutely amazing as a coordinator, super helpful. So, yeah, we'd love to do it again. It, I think, brought the fun out of STEAM, which is a huge push in education right now. So it was a great opportunity.
And I'll defer to Edgar, as he was the brainchild around the activities at the fair for the Boys and Girls Club.
So this year, we focused on drones. We acquired about four or five different drones here at the Boys and Girls Club in Salem. And we also acquired 12 Lego drones. So the kids at our station got to build Lego drones, and then crash them, and then rebuild them again. So it was really cool. The drones went about 12 feet in the air, and then they'd fall straight down. So we had a lot of kids come through. Parents were actually staying there with their kids and trying to make it work. It was a really cool project, so, yeah, we had a great time.
And the drones is just a portion of a larger middle school Be Great By Eight program that we have. So it was a great opportunity for us to bring our middle school program out to the county fair. So we appreciate, truly appreciate the opportunity and look forward to doing it again.
Tamara, do you have anything to add?
I just also want to mention thankfulness to our partners. This wouldn't be possible without our partners. What wasn't mentioned was the bazillion books that were also distributed at the fair. People's eyes were just wide with amazement when they were out there, just, yeah, take a book, take three books, share them with friends. And they were like, really? These books are like new. I can have this book. And you just see people with pride, and their parents are excited that their kids could leave the fair with something that didn't cost a penny. Once they got through the gate, they were able to enjoy that. And so that was a nice thing for us to do as well, and it wouldn't have been made possible without our great partners. The Farm Bureau also has really helped to make this possible because providing resources and support and connections. STEAM was mentioned, the acronym. A not only stands for arts at our fair, it also stands for agriculture, because agriculture is a huge part of our fair, and it is really one of the main contributions that we provide to our participants who attend our fairs, really education around what goes into our local agricultural community, whether it be raising an animal or doing a project, maybe it's doing something like, something like the Master Gardeners do from farm to table, et cetera. We really wanted to embed that into our project. My goal has always been to make our fair through this STEAM project the largest classroom in the county, and I think we're well on our way to making a mark on that. And we just hope that not only does our projects grow, but we hope that our partnerships continue to grow. And we're just really thankful for the success that we've had to date. And did the Farm Bureau, did you want to add anything?
No, no. Dylan did all this work.
Great. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, first of all, for getting the two awards, and thank you for coming. This was really great. I didn't want it to be just like you got the awards, you know, thank you very much, but really to get a flavor of what went into it. And this presentation this morning really accomplished that. So thank you all for being here, for the work that you do.
Yeah.
Do you want to take pictures? Okay, do you have?
Dylan, I just have a question for you.
So where's Jolene?
Sure, go ahead. How did you take out John as president of the Marion County Farm Bureau?
It was tough. I just kept feeding him donuts and cider, and I think, kind of in a comatose.
And he fell asleep.
Yeah.
Congratulations on that, by the way.
Thank you.
alters that commencement to coincide with the repayment that is due to the county per the court order as well as the second reinstated management agreement.
All right.
So, I just need a little bit more explanation of this and I'm wondering Gloria, if you, would you mind just explaining what this additional language does?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, originally Marion County had, through its lottery dollars and economic development, issued a bond to support the development of the Oregon Garden. The Oregon Garden Foundation is the one who actually holds the master lease from the city of Silverton on Oregon Garden, who owns the property. But they needed some additional resources and Marion County stepped up 15 years ago to provide those resources through a loan in the bond. As Tamara.
I see, okay.
Explained, the term of the original agreement was intended to expire after 15 years because that was anticipated that the debt would be repaid in 15 years. And with our economy going down and during the middle of that as well as some other considerations, there still is a substantial amount owing. And so this just basically, these leases, both this lease and the subsequent sublease back to Oregon Garden Foundation, these leases are really security, financial security for those debts that were owed. And so it's just coinciding with extending the term of that to coincide with the ultimate repayment or extinguishment of the debt.
But if I could, it changes it just from the bond purchase agreement to money's owed under the receivership order. So, I'm wondering, is there more money under the receivership order than the bond agreement? Or is it just, is it phrased differently?
Yes, yes, there is.
That's what I was trying to understand.
Yes, there is. The original bond was what the sublease and all that. We then, when the payments weren't able to be made, went into receivership and a receivership is where the court orders someone else to go in and temporarily take over, which is what happened with the Oregon Garden Foundation. They appointed Michael Batlin as a receiver who went in and helped restructure it to work on the debt repayment. And so there were costs associated with that receivership costs, which are now part of the court order. And there's some additional funds that were owed to the county for some improvements at the entryway that are also part of that. So, there's really three parts.
Right, so it expands, it does the date, but also expands kind of the scope of what's included in that.
Right.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may. I just want to say thank you to Gloria for her great counsel, not just here at these board meetings, but I do have a question since this is probably one of the last board meetings. Can you explain amendment number two to me?
The second management agreement? Is that what you?
No, this is for Gloria.
Oh.
No, I'm teasing, nevermind.
There is no two. He's just messing with you.
No, I can't, apparently.
So, I just, Mr. Chair, if you'll indulge me right now.
No, I'm not going to.
Please. I just, as I, as I heard Commissioner Carlson to ask you this very complicated question, right, I leaned over to John and my days, and I think Commissioner Carlson can relate to this, my days in the House, nine and a half years, whenever there was a freshman that was carrying a bill, they always asked him these weird questions, right? And they had nothing to do with what the real bill was and the person would stand up and go, what, you know, what is going on? So, I was just, as your last board meeting, I wanted to ask you a question that you would go, what's he talking about? Okay, just having some fun with you today. Thank you for your service.
We don't have time for that.
You want to make a motion, Commissioner?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve amendment number one to the head lease agreement with the Oregon Garden Foundation to extend the term of the lease as agreed to in the second restated management agreement.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve amendment number one to the head lease agreement with Oregon Garden Foundation. Any further discussion? I feel like I should ask for a second.
Yeah, any convoluted questions you want to ask on this?
Last chance.
No, I just, it's a bittersweet day.
You know, I just commented Gloria was never wrong, never. And then you tried to make her wrong at her last, that's just not right.
I didn't try to make her law wrong, I just wanted to have some fun.
He did stump me though.
She was like, what? Where?
What amendment number?
And if you wanted just a little explanation, the difference between the first lease and the second lease is the sublease is leasing it back to the Oregon Garden Foundation because Marion County is not actually in the business of running the Oregon Garden. This is just a financial security type arrangement.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we've had a motion and a second, is that correct?
Yes.
Off track here, so it's to approve amendment one to the sublease agreement with Oregon Garden Foundation. Any further discussion? Again, hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Well, an interesting coming up, Public Works, consider approval of an order to consider both the conditional use permit and the mass gathering permit for the Willamette Country Music Concepts LLC at one public hearing. Call up the conditional use for consideration by the Marion County Board of Commissioners, direct the Marion County hearings officer to hold a hearing on the conditional use application and make a recommendation to the board by January 31st, 2018. And a number of things and quick things. Brandon Wright, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record.
It's not on. Do you want to try, try the other mic?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Wright, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. The Willamette Country Music Concerts has applied for a conditional use in conjunction with a mass gathering permit for a gathering on August 16th through 19th, 2018 located in the 1300 block of Jorgensen Road South in Jefferson, which is just west of Interstate Five near the Ankeny Interchange. Marion County Mass Gathering Code requires that when a mass gathering is going to exceed 3,000 people, the permit for the mass gathering has to be accompanied by a conditional use permit to look at the land use compatibility for that event in the area. The Mass Gathering Code gives the board the ability to combine both conditional use and mass gathering applications into one to consider them at a public hearing. At a management update this week, or last week, November 20th, we did, I discussed with the board the options for combining the two applications into one public hearing. And one of the components of that would be to have the hearings officer review the conditional use and provide a recommendation to the board for the board to consider when they hold their own public hearing. I discussed that option with the applicant who is supportive of that idea. And so the order here in part sends the conditional use to the hearings officer to hold a public hearing to make a recommendation to the board for the board to consider at their own public hearing later. The public hearing before the hearings officer would be December 20th and the decision from the hearings officer would be due January 31st, 2018. And right now, we're looking at a probable, possible, likely board hearing date of February 28th. And so there's time for the hearings officer to have a hearing, open record period, and get a decision or recommendation to the board in time. The benefits of going to the hearings officer is to have a legal review of the criteria and the conditional use that the board can receive and consider. And the board will have its own hearing, it'll be de novo hearing. All participants can provide evidence and participate and the board can consider all the evidence there and will make the decision for the county. The order has a number of components. Because it's a conditional use, normally the planning director would issue a decision and would go through a process that include possible appeals to the hearings officer and to the board, which is, could be a lengthy process when we're trying to combine the two with the mass gathering. So, the order contains a provision where the board calls up jurisdiction on the conditional use, to have the, have the board have the original jurisdiction to consider it, which is provided and allowed by code, and then send it to the hearings officer for a recommendation back to the board. The order also says the conditional use and the mass gathering will be considered at one time by the board at a public hearing and that'll be at a later date. With that, I'm open for any questions you may have.
I'm going to start with just mine, but the, we're trying to speed it up to get a decision one way or another in time to, well, to be timely. So, suddenly, I didn't understand two public hearings and there's a redundancy and is that necessary? What are we trying to accomplish at a second hearing?
The first public hearing before the hearings officer gives the hearings officer the opportunity to review, to provide, to receive testimony, review that testimony against the criteria for the land use component of the combined decision.
And so ours is the mass gathering component, is that what you're telling me?
Your, your public hearing will be a combination of the land use, including the hearings officer's legal review recommendation, and the mass gathering and there's a noise variance to the required.
So, bottom line, Brandon, this speeds it up as quickly as possible, appeals aside and lets us come to a decision one way or another as quick as possible.
The fastest process would be for the board to hold the hearings on all three.
I see.
At one time, but that would preclude.
Having a hearing.
The role of the hearings officer.
Okay.
And the hearings officer role adds about six weeks to the process, five to six weeks.
But I get it. Some confidence we have in the legal review you mentioned, okay.
And I think, I believe from conversations with the organizer that that was considered to be a benefit to the organizer as well, to have, to have that kind of review. Out of the hearings officer's recommendation could be additional evidence that she recommends be provided to the board for their hearing that both proponents and opponents would be able to consider. And so the evidence before the board could be stronger in that way still.
All right, thank you. I interrupted, other questions?
Just, Mr. Chair, if I may. Brandon, this is probably about this process. I think we finally clarified why our process is different than other counties that have done this. Can you explain what we discovered? It's, it's our, it's not the state statute that's requiring us to do this, it's actually our ordinance.
The state statute says that when a mass gathering involves more than 3,000 people and will continue more than 120 hours, it has to have a land use component. But the state statute doesn't say whether you count setup and takedown time in the 120 hours. So, most jurisdictions do consider some component of setup and takedown time, but it's unclear. It could just be the event time. State statutes aren't clear in that way and you can read them kind of in extreme way, both ways, that probably aren't very realistic and you'd want to include like three months setup, three months takedown, could be allowed by state statute, but that could be pretty extreme. So, most jurisdictions include some component of setup/takedown time, but anything in excess of that. Marion County considers 48 hours setup/takedown time, excludes 48 hours setup time, 48 hours takedown time. Anything beyond 48 hours is included into the event time. So, in this case, the event is around 150 hours after excluding the takedown setup time. So, under the state definition, it's more than 3,000 people, it's more than 120 hours, it would require a land use component. In Marion County, our code is slightly different. Our code says if it's more than 3,000 people, regardless of the number of hours of the event, it becomes a mass gathering with a land use component.
Okay, that's.
And if we add in 120 hours and make, match state law, this event still exceeds 120 hours because of all the time involved. And so it still has the component of the land use regardless of how the Marion County code is written because of the length of the time. The setup time is, is, is a fair amount of setup time.
So, when, if I may, so when you say it exceeds 120 hours, I'm just doing the math here, how many days is that? The actual, and I heard your, your explanation of the gray area, how many days is the?
Seems like when they do events, they're working 10 hours a day, 12 to 10 to 12 hours a day. So, 120 hours would be 12 days, 10 hours a day.
So, the event, the actual, the actual, and the other jurisdictions that have not gone through this process, they're saying that the actual event is from Thursday to Sunday or whatever it is, so that's under the 120 hours.
Most jurisdictions do include some component of setup/takedown time as part of the event because of the impacts to neighbors with the noise and the construction activity and such, including the county where the event was, they do include a component of the setup/takedown time. So, this event, they could modify their time in some way to get under that 120 hours possibly. And it could be, this is the first time on the site and so setup/takedown, they're giving it more time than they would anticipate otherwise. So, in future years, they may not need the full 120 hours.
Okay, thank you.
There's a lot of options in that way to consider.
All right. Questions, others? Well, then perhaps to move the recommendation one way or another?
Mr. Chair, move that we approve an order to consider both the conditional use permit and the mass gathering permit for Willamette Valley Country Music Concerts, as just read and in the recommendation. Any further discussion?
Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Brandon. A lot of work ahead and you've already done it much. Thank you again. The next item we receive and consider, appeal of a hearings officer decision denying conditional use CU 17020 Brush Creek Solar LLC, Klopfenstein, Clerk's File 5735. You're already here, wonderful. Joe Finnemore, you want to go ahead and begin?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Finnemore. This item before you today is a conditional use to establish a photovoltaic solar power generating facility on a 12 acre portion of a 14 and a half acre parcel in an EFU zone on Seagull Springs Road Northeast, Silverton. The planning director issued a decision on June 19th approving the request. That decision was appealed to the hearings officer who conducted a public hearing on August 2nd and on October 30th issued a decision denying the request. On November 14th, the hearings officer's decision was appealed to the board. In the denial, the hearings officer found that two of the criteria were not satisfied. And the first is the criteria which required the applicant to demonstrate that construction and maintenance of the facility will not result in unnecessary soil compaction that reduces the productivity of soil for the crop production. This provision may be satisfied by submittal and approval of a plan prepared by an adequately qualified individual. The approved plan should be attached to the decision as a condition of approval. This criterion is discussed in Finding 16, beginning on page 12. The hearings officer's decision, the applicant submitted a soil compaction plan with the application. However, the hearings officer found that it contains little detail and was not site specific. The hearings officer concluded that the applicant did not provide evidence in the record that the criteria was satisfied. The second criterion requires the applicant to demonstrate that construction or maintenance will not result in unabated introduction or spread of noxious weeds or other undesirable weed species. This provision, once again, may be satisfied by submittal and approval of a weed control plan prepared by an adequately qualified individual. The approved plan, once again, would made, made a condition of approval on the decision. This criterion is discussed in Finding 17, beginning on page 13. The hearings officer found that the weed control plan was submitted, that was submitted, was not signed, certified, or site specific and concluded the plan did not prove that it was more likely than not that construction or maintenance would result in unabated weed, spread of noxious weeds and that that criteria was not, criteria was not satisfied. In the appeal, the applicant disagrees with the findings made by the hearings officer and as part of the appeal submitted a revised soil compaction plan to be considered if the appeal is accepted and has commissioned a revised weed mitigation plan to be prepared, which would be submitted prior to the hearing if the appeal is accepted. The applicant has agreed to extend the 150-day decision-making deadline if the appeal is accepted. application and make a recommendation to this board by January 31, 2018.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the order that considers both conditional use and mass gathering permit for Willamette Valley Country Music Concerts is just read and in the recommendation. Any further discussion? Hearing now in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, a lot of work ahead, and you've already done it much, thank you again. The next item we receive and consider, appeal of a hearings officer decision denying conditional use CU 17020 Brush Creek Solar LLC, Klopfenstein, Clerk's File 5735. You're already here, wonderful. Joe Finnemore, you wanna go ahead and begin?
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record, Joe Finnemore. This item before you today is a conditional use to establish a photovoltaic solar power generating facility on a 12 acre portion of a 14 and a half acre parcel in an EFU zone on Seagull Springs Road Northeast, Silverton. The planning director issued a decision on June 19 approving the request. That decision was appealed to the hearings officer who conducted a public hearing on August 2, and on October 30 issued a decision denying the request. On November 14, the hearings officer's decision was appealed to the board. In the denial, the hearings officer found that two of the criteria were not satisfied. And the first is the criteria which required the applicant to demonstrate that construction and maintenance of the facility will not result in unnecessary soil compaction that reduces the productivity of soil for the crop production. This provision may be satisfied by submittal and approval of a plan prepared by an adequately qualified individual. The approved plan should be attached to the decision as a condition of approval. This criterion is discussed in finding 16, meeting on page 12. The hearings officer's decision, the applicant submitted a soil compaction plan with the application, however, the hearings officer found that it contains little detail and was not site specific. The hearings officer concluded that the applicant did not provide evidence in the record that the criteria was satisfied. The second criterion requires the applicant to demonstrate that construction or maintenance will not result in unabated introduction or spread of noxious weeds or other undesirable weed species. This provision, once again, may be satisfied by submittal and approval of a weed control plan prepared by an adequately qualified individual. The approved plan, once again, would made made a condition of approval on the decision. This criterion is discussed in finding 17, beginning on page 13. The hearings officer found that the weed control plan was submitted, that was submitted, was not signed, certified, or site specific, and concluded the plan did not prove that that it was more likely than not that construction or maintenance would result in unabated wheat, spread of noxious weeds, and that that criteria was not criteria was not satisfied. In the appeal, the applicant disagrees with the findings made by the hearings officer, and as part of the appeal, submitted a revised soil compaction plan to be considered if the appeal is accepted by the board, and has commissioned a revised weed mitigation plan to be prepared, which would be submitted prior to the hearing if the appeal is accepted. The applicant has agreed to extend the 150-day decision-making deadline if the appeal is accepted. The board has the following options to accept the appeal, remand the matter back to the hearings officer, accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing with the suggested hearing date of January 3, 2018, deny the appeal, and uphold the hearings officer's decision denying the request. Staff recommends the board accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing with the suggested hearing date of January 3. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
And are there any?
Well, I don't agree with the recommendation of staff. I read through this last night, and I think we ought to remand it back to the hearings officer, because when we get these two pieces of documents, I want to make sure that she has a chance to review it and determine whether or not it passes muster. So, and the original documents that were reviewed by the planning staff were actually approved, right?
Correct.
So, planning staff looked at those and said, that's fine, and then it went to the hearings officer, and she said, it's not.
That's correct.
So, why would we send it back to the planning staff to tell us, who has no idea what a proper weed abatement plan for invasive species or a a whatever the soil compaction plan is? I don't have the technical expertise to do that, I would want someone with legal expertise to do that, but that's just my point of view, so I'll put that out there, so that's. So that would be what I would want to do. So we'd accept the appeal, but
So number one is what you're
Yeah, I'm suggesting number one, accept the appeal and remand it back to the hearings officer, then she can take a look and say, okay, this, you didn't have it, now, now you have it, does this pass muster, and then she can make the recommendation, and then it would, would it come back to us after that, right?
On appeal, it would, yes.
Right, yeah.
It would come, it would
If there is an appeal, but if she accepts
If she accepts it, and everything's done, then it's done, and then it's done there?
If if she accepts it and approves it, then the original appellant could appeal it also. So whatever decision the hearings officer makes will be appealable to the board.
Okay. But but when it comes back to the board, there'd be a recommendation, if all is well, to approve it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
I can do that, I'm I'm okay with that.
Okay, so I'll make that motion, then, that we accept the appeal and remand the matter back to the hearings officer, and that does require an agreement to extend for 150 days, but you said they were willing to do that if we accepted the appeal, correct?
Correct, the appeal itself, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we take option one, accept the appeal, remand the matter back to the hearings officer, and extend the 150-day decision-making deadline. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, then, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next items under the Sheriff's Office, consider approval of the Justice Reinvestment Council bylaws. Commander Jeff Wood, and I know Commissioner Carlson's been working on this, so, Jeff, you want to go ahead and begin?
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for a moment of your time. As I'm sure you're all aware, the criminal justice system is incredibly complicated. Number of years ago, at the at the request of Commissioner Carlson and the leadership of Commissioner Carlson, myself, Alicia Weathers, who is our senior office manager, tried to map out the whole system as a whole, and one of the things that we found, in addition to being incredibly complicated, is that no one person or no one area knows, start to finish, point of arrest to end of post-prison supervision, every facet of that system. For purposes of my presentation, I'm gonna kinda maybe a little unfairly categorize the whole system into three elements. One is justice diversion, which you can think of as that point of law enforcement contact. The second area is prison diversion, which is post-law enforcement contact, sentencing, diversion programs, like our Senate Bill 416 program, or specialty courts, and then finally, our reentry services, which you're mostly familiar with me talking about. Specific to reentry services, and now I'm gonna kinda go upstream, reverse order, so to speak. Back in 2009, when the Sheriff's Office received a Second Chance Act award, as part of the strategic plan that we had submitted, the sheriff had initiated a Marion County reentry council, an advisory council to the sheriff for purposes of reentry and reentry programming. And in addition to working with the Marion County reentry initiative, this council was part of the collaborative model, which you've heard of repeatedly, included people from the treatment community, housing community, education, mentoring, employment, and of course, supervision. This included representatives of the Board of Commissioners, Bridgeway Recovery Services, Community Action Agency, Union Gospel Mission, the Health Department, and of course, the Sheriff's Office, just to name a few. You're familiar with many of these programs associated with the reentry council, including Link Up Program, Student Opportunity for Achieving Results Program, our jail reentry program, our Women's Accelerated Reentry Program, and of course, the Immunos Resource Center. With the passage of House Bill 3194 back in 2013, some of the drift occurred with the reentry council in terms of being specifically focused on just reentry services, the council too, because these programs and these areas are so interconnected and intertwined, started also providing some advice in terms of the prison diversion programs. Because of this, and and because of the passage of House Bill 3194, we're talking about programs, again, like the Senate Bill 416 program, victim services, we now have contracts with two programs as part of our Justice Reinvestment Initiative. And in addition to another, a number of other efforts that the Sheriff's Office has provided leadership on, and in addition to with Marion County, including the Stepping Up Initiative, our mental health collaborative efforts in terms of trying to divert people from jail who suffer from mental illness, working with the Oregon State Hospital to the with the aid and assist to populations, so that we don't have people with mental health issues spending more time in jail than is absolutely necessary. And again, you're very familiar with our Mobile Crisis Response Team and our Crisis Outreach Response Teams. Because of all this, the sheriff is now hoping to have an advisory council that spans multiple areas of the criminal justice spectrum, including justice diversion, prison diversion, and reentry services. With some of the projects that we have for the future, namely, we are, along with the District Attorney's Office, going to initiate, starting in January, I believe, a law enforcement assisted diversion program. Again, that would be in that first category, that initial law enforcement contact, the justice diversion area. Again, we hope, we just received a grant from WVCH to initiate this program, working with our law enforcement partners, inclusive of Salem Police and the Enforcement Division of the Sheriff's Office. So in consultation with the board and the Sheriff's Office, we are hoping to expand, because we currently have a reentry council that covers two areas of that three-area criminal justice spectrum, to expand that responsibility, the advisory capacity of the Justice Reinvestment Council, to this newly formed Justice Reinvestment Council. I hope this all makes sense. And as we encompass, or as we embark on these new projects to include the lead program and the DA diversion program, we will have a council that will provide advisory capacity to the sheriff in all these areas, knowing that they are all intertwined, and that they all have an impact on one another. Back in June, June 15, 2017, the Marion County Reentry Council received a prezi presentation from me, again, compiled by Alicia Weathers, my office manager, to explain this new process and this new advisory capacity. They unanimously supported the motion to expand to include justice diversion, prison diversion, and reentry services, and also approve the bylaws which are before you right now, hopefully, for your approval. Again, in consultation with legal counsel and Bruce Armstrong, there was some discussion on whether or not we would need to present this to the board, but sheriff and the Sheriff's Office, we want to be very open, we want to be inclusive, it's very important for us to have the board's support with this new endeavor, and so hence why we are here today in front of you, hoping to get approval. With that, I will stop my testimony, and of course, I'm available for any questions.
So first of all, I want to say thank you, Jeff, for putting all of this together, and the Justice Reinvestment Council that's been meeting as the Marion County Reentry Council consists of a lot of great people who we'll see in the next item, who put in a lot of effort, and so it's it's great to see us kind of get this structured together. There is some overlap of membership between the Justice Reinvestment Council and the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, and also the Criminal Justice Advisory Council. We have this sheet that we put together a few months ago when we were looking at that, where we list all of the positions and kind of where the overlap is. So, my apologies, but last week was Thanksgiving, and I had a whole lot of people at my house, and so Monday I jumped back into work and was kind of underwater all day, and then Tuesday I had meetings all day, that was yesterday, and solid waste management ended I think at 7:30, and so then I went to my computer at 7:30 and went, oh, I haven't looked at the board packet yet, and so, and I pulled all of this up and started checking, cross-checking the the names that we had talked about with the names that showed up, and then what was in the bylaws, and there were a few little areas that needed to be tweaked, and so chose the dedication of our staff. I sent an email, it was 8 o'clock last night, and by 8:30, I had an email back from Jeff that he texted Alicia, and I think before 7 this morning, or somewhere between 7 and 8, she had the changes made. So so this is tweaked slightly from what was at out, has been out on the board agenda for the past week, I think Christie just loaded these up right before the meeting today, but the changes are really very minimal. In the representation section on page one at the bottom, we've added the words where it says, at least one representative will be appointed and has the authority to vote from organizations, we added the including but not limited to, and that way, if there's a desire to add a person from an organization that's not listed, which there was a request that we've talked about recently, when we haven't had a chance to actually connect with this person, we're not gonna have to come back and revise the bylaws every time we get an organization that isn't officially listed on here. And then I think there was one entity on here where we didn't have a member, but it was said we had to have a member, so we just took that one off, so. So that's really the the gist of the changes that were made. And then also, there was, the Oregon Legislative Assembly was listed under, or requiring an organization to be appointed from that, and that they would have authority to vote, and on our list, we had talked about inviting legislators, but making them ex officio members.
Ex, yes.
Legislative members, I've been one in the past, they're very busy people, they don't always tend to be able to come regularly to these types of meetings when you rely on them from a quorum, sometimes it can cause hardship on the group, and so by making them non-voting or ex officio members, then we're not having that worry, they are welcome to participate, but don't are not required to be there. And so that, so Alicia created a separate section for non-voting members, and then also used the language including but not limited to, so we could add other ex officio members to that. So I think those were the main changes, and I have one more suggested change, since, which I realized as I was sitting here when the meeting started, I counted up the number of folks that we're going to appoint in the next item, and it's 21. And I looked, and it says the council is comprised of up to 21 members, so we've got a cap of 21. So if we wanted to go out and ask those two additional people that have, one that hasn't responded, and one that we haven't got to yet, we wouldn't be able to invite them because we would have to, we'd have the cap. So I'm suggesting we lift it to 23 at a minimum, so I'm just throwing that number out there, so would that be acceptable to the Sheriff's Office?
That would be perfectly acceptable, Commissioner.
All right, is, would you rather do, or would you rather do 25, just to give us a little flexibility?
I thought you were saying 25, but it doesn't matter to me.
What which which number would you like?
25 sounds great.
Let's do 25, all right, so on membership foray, we'll change it, make it up to 25 voting members, that gives us the opportunity to appoint a few more members if we're so inclined.
Excellent.
So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
No.
Then perhaps a motion and raising the number to 25.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the Justice Reinvestment Council bylaws with raising it to 25.
My seconded the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Justice Reinvestment Council bylaws and making the committee capped at 25. Further discussion? I hear none, all in favor, then, say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you, Jeff. Commissioner, thank you. Don't quite know what to do with the next one, this is the longest list I've ever seen, we're gonna probably read it one time, so I'll just get started. The next item is related, we consider approval of an order that appoints the following members to the Justice Reinvestment Council with terms ending December 31, 2018. Your name is on it, Jeff, do you have anything you wanted to say?
No, Commissioner, other than this, this includes most of the reentry council members in addition to appointing some new members who would be part of that justice reinvestment, inclusive of those three areas that I described before. So we have representation from all areas, law enforcement, private nonprofit, emergency service providers, hospitals, and of course, the the Health Department representatives too. So it is a good inclusive list of people who've both previously been involved and will be vital to our implementation of the law enforcement assisted diversion program.
All right, and here's executive privilege, I'll wait for the whole list to be read in the motion.
All right, Mr. Chair, well, there was one name that was left off the agenda, so I'm gonna read the list from the exhibit as opposed to from the agenda, but I would move approval of the order that appoints the following members to the Justice Reinvestment Council with terms ending December 31, 2018. And they are Commander Jeff Wood, Chair, Marion County Commissioner Kevin Cameron, Marion County Commissioner Janet Carlson, Marion County Sheriff Jason Myers, Marion County District Attorney Walt Beglaw, Marion County Community Services Director Tamara Gatch, Marion County Health Department Program Manager Anne Marie Banfield, Family Building Blocks Executive Director Patrice Altenhofen, Lyons Rural Fire District EMS Coordinator Sherry Bensima, SED Corp President Chad Freeman, Salem Health Director of Emergency and Psychiatric Services Jill Fulkerson, Schumekka to Community College President Julie Huckstein, and this was the one that was missing on the agenda, Marion County Public Defender Executive Director Jessica Campfe, Liberty House Chief Executive Officer Allison Kelly, Union Gospel Mission Director of Programs Janine Knight, Creekside Counseling Executive Director Michael Lahardi, Salem Police Department Deputy Chief Skip Miller, Bridgeway Recovery Services Executive Director Tim Murphy, Community Action Agency Executive Director John Reeves, WorkSource Oregon Project Director Jeff Stipro, and Dick Withnell, business member. And actually, I think a couple of these titles aren't quite right either, but I can get those to Alicia, and we can fix those.
So, so I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair, and that was 21 names, and we just raised it to 25, so
Right.
we have some room for some of those changes that we want to make.
Right, exactly, right, yeah. If we would've kept it at 21, that would've been it.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the order that points the members listed on our agenda with the addition of, I didn't quite hear the name, Jessica?
Jessica Campfe, K-A-M-P-F-E, and she's the Marion County Public Defender.
Wonderful, she's listed, didn't they?
Yeah, she's on, she's on the exhibit, she just didn't make it when we, she was left off, and it didn't make it on the agenda, so.
Any further discussion?
No, just, good, I know we have a new, another person we're gonna want to reach out to and appoint, so I'd be good, so.
Quite over a cold, Jeff, excuse me. All right, is there any discussion, call a question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, and thank you, and thank you to all of them. All right, I'm not sure, I hate it, when we've had people waiting for an entire meeting, but I would like to have about a five-minute break before we open the public hearings, is that agreeable?
Sure.
So we meet back, Jerome, if you're listening, at 10:15. All right, we're back, and now it's 10:17, took a couple minutes extra. I want to open a public hearing that considers amending the Marion County Urban Zone Code to permit accessory, what do we always say, auxiliary?
Accessory, accessory.
Accessory dwelling units.
I see.
Brandon Reich?
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. Jurisdictions in Oregon may permit accessory dwelling units on land within urban growth boundaries. The provisions here before the board consider today would apply inside urban growth boundaries outside of annexed city limits, the urban areas that the county manages in poor cities until they annex a property into the city. ADUs are a housing option that can provide affordable, long-term housing for urban residents. In Marion County, Amesville, Kaiser, Salem, and Silverton permit ADUs. Marion County Board of Commissioners initiated a process to consider amendments to the Marion County Urban Code on June 21, 2017, and directed the Marion County Planning Commission to consider the amendments, hold a public hearing, and make a recommendation on standards to the board. The commission held a work session on July 18, and a public The commission held a work session on July 18th and a public hearing on August 1st, 2017, and has made a recommendation to the board. The board held a work session on the commission's recommendation on August 22nd and must hold its own hearing, which is today. On November 1st, the board approved the hearing date for today to consider the amendments to the urban zone code. Accessory dwelling units are accessory to the main dwelling on the property and have standards applied to ensure the units remain accessory to the primary use of the property, and they cannot function as separate independent uses on a lot. Today I'll briefly review the Planning Commission recommendation standards, then discuss the areas where the board may wish to consider options for standards that are applied, and finally mention types of standards the Planning Commission does not recommend the county adopt. And as I go through, certainly if you have any questions or any comments, or something you'd like me to respond to, please let me know. And I'll try to move at, at a clip, so I'll, I'll get through here pretty quick, I hope. The Planning Commission recommended that one ADU be permitted on a parcel with a dwelling that the ADU be interior attached to the residence or detached, and 900 square foot maximum in size, but no larger than 75% the size of the main dwelling, which is, whichever is less. ADUs would be permitted inside or rear yards if detached, and in front, side or rear yards if attached or interior, and be exempt from density standards for the number of dwelling units on a parcel. The land with an ADU could not be divided from the dwelling on the property because the ADU is accessory to the dwelling on the property. There should be a min- minimum rental duration of 30 days to ensure the ADU is rented as a kind of long-term housing, not for short-term rental. And the property owner would be required to record a notice on the property acknowledging these standards for the ADUs. In urban transition zones, ADUs would be constructed interior or attached only in order to preserve the largest amount of land in the UT zone for future annexation and development. In single-family residential and urban development zones would permit interior attached or detached ADUs. ADUs would be, would be permitted outright, subject to standards, and no land use review would be required. Property owners could seek adjustments to standards. That was the Planning Commission's recommendation after their hearing. And at the work session with the board on August 22nd, 2017, the board asked for options to consider in addition to the Planning Commissioner's recommendation in the following areas. Whether manufactured housing be permitted as an ADU. During discussions with the Planning Commission, at least one member of the commission supported using manufactured dwelling as an ADU. The manufactured dwelling could be required to meet setbacks, excuse me, meet the standards for development for ADUs such as size, location on the parcel, setback. And additionally, similar standards could be applied that are currently applied to manufactured dwellings on urban lots, such as roof pitch, siding, height off the ground, et cetera. Manufactured dwelling meeting the standards for size, location, and appearance would ensure the ADU would be consistent with the residential nature of the area where it's placed. The Planning Commission recommended the ADU not exceed the height of the primary dwelling. The board may also consider standards that allow an ADU to be constructed to a maximum height, such as 25 feet for detached ADU and 35 feet for an at- attached or interior ADU. These heights provide flexibility for a homeowner wishing to construct an ADU on a property with an existing one-story home while ensuring that the height of the ADU remains residential in nature. Detached ADUs would be able to be up to 25 feet height regardless of the height of the existing dwelling, and less than the maximum of 35 feet that's permitted for residential, for the single-family home residential development now. On a sloped, on a sloped roof, the height is measured as, as the average distance between the peak and the eaves. So there's a little more flex, there's a little more extra room flexibility there on the height on a sloped roof because of the, measuring the average height between the peak and the eve. The Planning Commission recommended that the same setbacks applied now to accessory structures in urban areas also be applied to ADUs. The board asked staff to compare those setbacks with the ones Salem adopted for ADUs. Salem requires setbacks for an ADU in the rear yard of five feet from the rear, from, excuse me, ADU in the rear yard five feet from all property lines, rear and side. In the side yard, Salem requires three feet from the side property line. Marion County's code for accessory structures establishes setbacks based on the height of the structure and the location in the rear yard. Staff found no substantial difference between setback methods. We compared five different lots at random in the East Salem area, compared Salem setbacks versus Marion County setbacks, and under both setback regimes, an ADU could fit in the same manner. There are times when the, like, full 900 square foot ADU could not fit under either method just because of the shape of the lot and the way the house is oriented compared to the, the rear yard. Both sets of standards, Salem's or the Marion County accessory standards, appear to provide the separation for an ADU from neighboring properties and ensure adequate distance between structures for fire and safety. For parking, the Planning Commission recommended that if interior or attached, the ADU have one additional parking space on the property. If detached, two additional parking spaces be provided. No new curb cuts would be permitted. Requiring two additional parking spaces for the ADU is the same as the requirement for the dwelling on the property, which is two parking spaces. Since it's possible that a garage would provide two parking spaces and the driveway in front of the garage an additional two parking spaces, most homes already have four spaces, and the ADU standard would be able to be met that way. However, if the, if the ADU isn't constructed internally, it may result in the conversion of the garage to an ADU. Since the garage will no longer be available for parking, it's harder to achieve two additional spaces. In that case, the Planning Commission proposed to require only one additional parking space. Prohibiting new curb cuts to extend or create driveways was recommended because the curb cut on the street removes a space from street parking to create a new space off-street, which equates to no net gain in the parking spaces. New spaces can be created off-street using the existing driveway. Salem's code does not require additional parking spaces associated with an ADU. Now, the city changed whether it considered the driveway as a parking space. Now the city considers a driveway as one or two spaces. This effectively provided parking that could be used in conjunction with the ADU that wasn't considered parking before because of the way Salem defined parking. Marion County has always counted both the spaces in the garage and the driveway as parking spaces. Thus, some dwellings would have up to four parking spaces on a property in conjunction with a dwelling that would not require additional parking if an detached ADU were constructed. There are some standards not recommended by the Planning Commission for adoption. The property owner occupied status. It is not proposed to require the owner of the property to live in either the ADU or the main house. In residential areas, dwellings are commonly being rented now, and it appears that whether the ADU or dwelling are both, or both are rented will not change the residential nature of the area and is consistent with existing residential rentals and neighborhoods. Screening. The standards proposed for adoption, such as setbacks and location on the lot, will ensure that ADUs are consistent with existing residential development, and any impact will be minimal. Therefore, additional screening, like fencing or shrubs, in addition to those standards, is not being recommended by the Planning Commission. The ability to be rented. Portland and Ashland, which both permit ADUs without a property, sorry, a property owner occupied requirement, have found that the owner lives on the property 70 to 80% of the time anyway. Without the owner occupancy requirement, it is possible to finance the property as a duplex, even though it's not a duplex in code, but where a portion of the renter's income is counted toward the property owner's income for loan qualifying purposes, making it more viable to finance the construction of an ADU. Detached and interior additions, ADUs can be very expensive, and the ability to finance it in an additional way is a, is a big benefit to the property owner, and it's something that Salem considered when they adopted their ADU code. Also, the enforcement of the owner occupancy requirement is tremendously difficult, according to the City of Eugene, and it takes a lot of staff time on a continuous basis to enforce the requirement. The last one, design standards. Design standards are where there's a review for the appearance of the structure, things like windows and overhangs and color of the structure. County does not currently have design standards for any of our structures. They're difficult to adopt and tend to be discretionary in nature. Tends to be a large process that goes with them, including a basic set of design standards as well as an appeals process, say to the Planning Commission to review. Salem, I believe, has design standards for multifamily development, but not for other types of, of residential development. Without the existing design review process in place at the county, it would be, it would be difficult to apply design standards to ADUs. The standards for development proposed elsewhere here in this discussion would ensure compatibility with the residential nature of the neighborhoods that ADUs are placed in without requiring design standards in addition to these other standards in the code. Staff recommends the Board of Commissioners approve amending the urban code to permit accessory dwelling units and approve a set of standards for the development of those units, and then direct staff to return with an ordinance reflecting your decision. Thank you, with that I'm available for any questions you may have.
Are there questions? Right now?
Not yet.
So, Brandon, just for the record, have we, has there been any inclusion of testimony, um, either electronically or by mail that we haven't seen?
No, there's testimony in the file, and I provided you with a copy of the testimony from the Salem Association Realtors today. There's a member of the association here that will testify, um, so you've got the hard copy, um, of, of the testimony.
All right, I'll find it, thank you. Now, we have three people signed up to speak, all of them. Did everyone get a chance to sign up that wished to speak this morning? Okay, thank you. So take them in the order they came, and I'll say your name, and if you'd come over, reintroduce yourself, and, uh, and give your address, and go ahead and give your testimony. The first is Michael Johnson.
Yes, good morning again. Uh, Michael Johnson, I represent the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association. Commissioner Cameron and Commissioner, uh, Carlson were, visited, uh, the Neighborhood Association meeting two months ago, uh, rehearsed this with us, uh, and we found it, uh, interesting. We talked about it in our last month's meeting, uh, which would be four, well, last month's meeting, four weeks ago. And there were some other questions that either we didn't have answers to, or items that came up. Uh, currently, in the property tax records, there is a stormwater fee. And the stormwater fee is based on a 3,000 square foot hardscape, uh, per dwelling unit. Uh, and if we add, uh, another dwelling unit, what's that going to do to the hardscape fee? Is that going to be dispersed throughout, uh, the entire of the urban development area? Or, or the stormwater district, and shared by people who don't have a housing unit on there? Or is it going to be added on, uh, to the property owners, uh, you know, where the, where the dwelling unit would be? So that was one question. Another one had to do with parking. Currently, under the, uh, code, uh, right now, I, most, all of the parking in the urban area is no more than five cars on the property at any one time. Uh, and that has to be on a, on either a hardscape or on gravel. If we added the extra spaces into the yard, uh, they have to go on the gravel, but, uh, given the nature of some of these homes already, where they have lots of people living there, uh, and this is one of the questions that came up. The, the tendency to exceed five cars is something that gets, uh, raised, at least among the, the, the board. The parking, uh, density in, uh, our part of East Salem, uh, right now, uh, we get complaints. Uh, some of you are familiar with Next Door, and there are people on there complaining and talking all the time about, there's some streets you can't get down because it's so full of cars. The other one, and as Brandon mentioned it, about the zero lot line property. Uh, it may have began as a duplex, which was zoned one way and then rezoned so that each side became a residential, single-family dwelling, but it has a zero lot line. If you put a dwelling unit in the back, uh, with the setbacks, it's entirely possible that you could fill up the entire backyard, usable backyard, with a dwelling unit. Uh, and it, it, it was something that, that just, it came up in discussion. From a point of view of, does the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association, uh, support the accessory dwelling units? And the answer is yes, and they voted all in favor to do so, but with questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, you're, excuse me, do you have something else, Mike?
I think that pretty much covers all the notes.
All right, thank you very much.
Good, my parking's about ready to run out anyway.
All right, and next is, uh, Mike Erdman.
Morning. Commissioner's Mike Erdman with the Home Builders Association of Marionopol Counties. Our address is, uh, 2075 Madrona Avenue Southeast in Salem. Uh, here today, very supportive of the, of the county's effort to allow for accessory dwelling units uh, within the unincorporated urban areas of the county. Uh, certainly believe there's a lot of advantages to, to ADUs. Certainly, they allow us to, to better maximize the use of land inside urban growth boundaries. They can provide for additional, more affordable housing options in a day and age in which housing's becoming increasingly less affordable. Uh, but then, of course, for families, they provide perhaps the opportunity to, uh, to derive some rental income from the property. And then from those that may have loved ones that need a caregiver, uh, or multi-generational families that want to live together on one parcel, it provides a lot more flexibility and, and housing options. We're very supportive of that. And we're very appreciative of the effort that Brandon, staff, and, and the Planning Commission has put into these, uh, to these recommended standards. We are, as I said, very supportive, although we do have a couple things that we want to talk about, maybe some, some suggestions and modifications that we might ask to be incorporated. Uh, the first issue is, is on the setbacks. As you can see, Brandon outlined the, the setback, uh, standards. Uh, they are different, uh, from what Salem has adopted. Uh, we would certainly suggest that, um, that you go with the option presented to keep the setbacks for accessory structures in UGBs other than Salem, but mirror Salem's, uh, setback standards within the, uh, within the Salem-Kaiser UGB of unincorporated Marion County. Certainly, it provides for consistency and, and an ease of folks to understand that that standard's going to be the same, regardless of which side of the, of the city-county line you happen to be on. Building height is another issue that I want to address. Uh, you were given, I think, kind of an either-or option there. You could either, um, uh, state that you couldn't exceed the height of the primary dwelling, or you could go with a maximum 25-foot height for detached ADUs, 35-foot height for attached and interior. Uh, we would certainly suggest that, uh, that, that restricting the height to the, uh, to the height of the primary dwelling is problematic for a couple reasons. Uh, number one, it would really prevent somebody from doing, um, a, an ADU above a detached garage when you've got a single fam- or a single-story house. Uh, and then, I suppose, a strict reading of that code would prohibit you from adding a second story onto your house if it was going to be used as an ADU. And to us, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense because, uh, property owners have that right today under existing code to add a second story to their house. And I'm not sure, uh, why it would make a difference as to what the use of that second story would be, as to whether or not you're allowed to do it. So, we would suggest that you go with the, uh, with the 25-foot height on detached ADUs and the 35-foot height for interior or attached ADUs. The, the, the other issue we want to address is parking. Uh, and I think this is one that, um, that while I understand why the recommendation came forward from staff and the Planning Commission, I think it's problematic. Uh, and the, the reason is this. Um, most properties within the urbanized areas, you know, of, of unincorporated Marion County, your driveway is going to be five or six feet from that side property line. And if you have to add one or two parking spaces, okay, then you're going to end up pushing into the front yard of the house and adding a whole bunch of concrete or a whole bunch of gravel. And beyond that, you can't do an additional curb cut. So number one, you've got the aesthetics, okay? Now you've got a whole bunch of concrete that fills up what used to be lawn. But the question is, how do you get to it if you, if you can't do a curb cut? You know, it, it's one thing to have a wider driveway when, as the property owner, you control, you know, access to that driveway. Perhaps you've got three cars, you've got, you know, a ch- Perhaps you've got three cars, you've got, you know, a child that's got a car, you can coordinate the coming and goings of those vehicles. But when you've got two different residents, you know, two separate tenancies in that property and somebody's coming home later at night, for example, how do they access that extra driveway space if there's no curb cut? And so the answer is, well, perhaps they just drive across the curb and tear the curb up and the landscaping, that's not going to look good. And so the thought is, just do away with the parking requirement. Salem looked at that very issue and they recognized the problems that were inherent in it and they just made that decision to do away with the off-street parking requirement. It's just the issues are the aesthetics of putting all that additional concrete into the front yard, but number two, if you can't do a curb cut and you can't access it, then it becomes impractical. You're going to drive across the curb and it's not going to look very good at all. So, we would suggest that you do away with the parking requirements. I really don't think you're going to see a whole lot of impact. I know folks are concerned in the neighborhoods about what that does for on-street parking. I just don't see, think you're going to see that many ADUs. I mean, if you look in Salem, for example, going back to middle of the year when they adopted it through the end of October, they've had one permit for an ADU. And I think the economics work differently, you know, in this community than they might in Portland where you've seen a lot more ADUs. Up there, of course, you've got a highly desirable urban core that folks want to live close to and the rents are so expensive up there that somebody can build an ADU and they can actually make it pencil. You know, it's pretty expensive to do an accessory dwelling unit. You're going to spend to do a detached unit probably $100, $120,000 pretty easily and just the economics make it really difficult. I think it might happen in Portland. It's not going to happen so much down here and I think that's evidenced by the fact that in Salem, they've only had one permit since they've adopted their standards. So, happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions?
Good right now. Thank you.
And the last one signed up is Holly Sears.
I'm Holly Sears and I'm here on behalf of the over 900 members of the Salem Association of Realtors and our address is 2794 12th Street Southeast in Salem. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on the proposed standards for ADUs in Marion County. We have provided written testimony, I believe that you have it, so my comments will be brief and I really echo much of what Mike mentioned to you just previously. And I just first want to thank very much your efforts and Mr. Reich's efforts as well as the planning commission on your work on this proposal. We were closely involved in the ADU standards that Salem adopted earlier this year and we're very much in support of standards from Marion County, so thank you very much for looking at this. We have reviewed the standards outlined in the chart provided and we do support the proposal with the following options. First, we support the inclusion of manufactured dwellings in the types of units allowed as long as the other standards for ADUs are met. We also support the option of allowing a maximum height of 25 feet for detached ADUs and 35 for attached and interior ADUs to allow property owners some flexibility in design and to be able to build above a detached garage. Limiting the height of the ADU to that of the existing dwelling, as Mike mentioned, kind of creates a loophole that a property owner could build just in addition to their home and then later convert it to an ADU, so it really doesn't make a lot of sense. We also agree with keeping the existing setback requirements for accessory structures in UGBs other than Salem. And then for Salem, really mirroring what they did with their ADUs with the five feet from the rear yard and the three feet from the side yard. And lastly, we recommend only requiring one additional parking space for ADU types. Much of our concerns mirror what Mike said, but our, our association really felt like, you know, there were people on one side that think maybe we should mirror what Salem did and not have any, and then there were some that really believed that maybe requiring one additional parking space would be a good idea. But requiring two additional parking spaces for detached ADUs could really prohibit some of those owners from converting a detached garage because they would lose those two required parking spaces and so they would really, that would really eat into the four that would be required if they were to do that. And requiring, requiring only one space or no additional space, as Mike mentioned, would really be less burdensome on that property owner and occupants of an ADU because it's a smaller accessory dwelling unit, really would very unlikely need those two additional parking spaces. So, those are our comments and appreciate your time.
Thank you. All the questions or comments? All right. Thank you. All right, that is everyone signed up to speak this morning. Brandon, if you'd come back. We heard a lot repeat having to do with parking, setbacks, height. The one, the one strange one, I don't know if you'd have the answer to off the top here, it had to do with the stormwater fees.
I don't have an answer for that.
Neither do I.
The fees won't be in the planning code, but as was pointed out, the number of ADUs that were proposed, could possibly be developed are relatively low, which I guess depending how you feel about ADUs, that's unfortunate, 1% to 3%. So the overall stormwater impact, maybe that will be taken into account, the total possible ADUs that are out there.
Well, if I could just add, my recollection, and again, don't quote me on this, is that they didn't go house by house and figure out what your stormwater fee was. It was just kind of a residential one for a residence, no matter what size or whatever. So, I don't know how this would be any different than having a shed in your backyard or something else. You know, it's going to vary by residence and so I don't think it's going to impact it really at all.
And the amount of coverage for roof coverage for an ADU, you could be as low as 450 square feet for a two-story ADU and still achieve a 900 square foot maximum. So 450 square feet isn't really a lot bigger than a 200 square foot shed.
All right, fine. So I don't quite know where we want to go with it. Looks to me like we have decisions to make. First of all, whether we approve the thing to begin with, but then answers are standards on parking, setbacks, and height. There may be some others.
Right. So Mr. Chair, well, let me, yeah, let me just say, I really support, first of all, the idea of including manufactured dwellings. We have heard testimony today and we also heard it at the work session that that would be something that we should do, so I'm going to put that out there, that would be my preference.
I don't know, maybe we just go down a list and I also am fine with that and so is Commissioner Cameron.
And then I think the next one, all the rest of them...
You'll keep score, Brandon.
I will, and a question on that would be, we heard from the Manufactured Housing Association representative at the management update that the manufactured housing that could be used as an ADU, they can manufacture them in different sizes and they can manufacture them with pitched roofs and all these different aspects. So, in addition to meeting the basic ADU location size such, would you want staff to prepare an ordinance that includes items that we currently include for a manufactured house in the urban area, such as types of siding, no vertical rolled good siding, pitched roof, things like that? Additional standards to help ensure the manufactured home is consistent with the appearance of residential areas?
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, so Brandon, if I, if I'm going to stick build it, right? What are the requirements for what it looks like, stick build on siding, et cetera? Is, I mean...
You have the same requirements? I guess that's the question.
Right. Essentially, like, the, the type of manufactured housing, there's different options for manufactured housing that you don't find in site built, like the roll, vertical roll good siding you won't see and then requiring that it be a super good sense, built with some basic standards for insulation and such. That's part of the, my understanding, it's part of the building code and a basic, but when you add manufactured home, we're looking for, there's different options. There could be old manufactured homes out there that are very small that would be able to meet, like from the 60s, that could meet that unless we put additional standards to ensure that they got compatible with residential areas.
So, I think we probably need to focus on this because I, I'm thinking of manufactured home that's built in the last, what, 10 years, they're pretty, they're good sense, they're, they're in good shape. So, moving in an old manufactured home, I don't think is, is what we're after here.
And nothing would prevent that in code unless we had standards like the vertical roll good siding, pitched roof, the insulation component. If we didn't have that in code, nothing would...
So if I may go back to my original question, is that, is that code or that standard, if, if a home builder's going to come in and build a, build a auxiliary?
Accessory.
Accessory dwelling unit, I know I had to say that. Accessory dwelling unit, just to build it from scratch, stick build it, are there codes that have to be met on pitched roofs and siding, et cetera, in a neighborhood now?
No, they can have a flat roof, for instance. So it's different in that way.
Okay. And siding?
I don't know about siding, but I think some siding for manufactured homes are available for manufactured housing that aren't available for regular, stick-built houses. One option would be to require that the home be newer than, say, 85 so that it has the insulation component, the super good sense insulation component.
So from 85 forward, that's, that's a standard?
And then whether it has a pitched roof or whatever kind of siding it might have would then, you know, be optional for the homeowner.
So, let me just say that I would prefer for us not to try to figure out the I dotting and the T crossing right here, but perhaps we could conceptually say that, number one, I don't want to have a manufacturer to have such a high standard compared to what others might be. So if you could have a flat roof ADU with a stick built, why couldn't you have a flat roof with a manufacturer? So to just say, well, can we take all of our standards that we have for a home and pull it over? I would say no. All right? I think maybe that's too high a standard. At the same time, I can understand where you'd want to have some standards so you wouldn't have just, you know, like a lean-to or whatever in the backyard. Could we ask him to contact the Manufactured Home Association rep who's not here today and perhaps negotiate some language that then you could prepare for the board that we could review before you bring the ordinance back? Would that work?
I'll do that.
Right, and...
But I was just saying...
I was just going to offer, it sounds like there's another way to do is just to say, we're not looking to bring in old derelict places. And so you could say, well, make a date. I heard 85, I don't know. You could make it 95 or 2000 is probably a good number, that's 17 years old, that you have some confidence that it meets current standards and things and it's not just some old shell that's been out in a shed somewhere.
Right. But I would not want to pick that date here right now on the, I'd like them to do a little research on it.
Right. Because I'm sure the standards have even changed since 85, there's probably even new standards and so I think that would, that would be the right thing to do is get the manufactured home people in and, because they, they're going to want, well, here's, they're also going to want to promote a higher date because they want to, they want to move their new product, right? So, something that's reasonable, we need to find out that research and determine it.
We don't want to make it so limiting for people that it becomes difficult for them.
I understand. That's why I wanted to find out where the board direction on that because of the different considerations. So thank you. I will find out more on that.
So I think size, location, density, occupied status, land division, number are all, they're all, no options, right? I mean, we've got, we're all in agreement on that.
You certainly have options if you'd like, but it seems like there's agreement, general agreement on that.
So move to height? So my preference would be that we have the detached maximum height of 25 feet and the attached interior 35 feet. So it doesn't have, so it's not limited to the size of the height of the primary dwelling, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and is that, I'm trying to make sure, did we hear testimony for anything other than that today? So I know the Realtors, theirs was in writing and so they said...
No, I don't believe we did.
Right, so they're...
And 35 feet's the existing height for a residence in the, in the single-family zones, so that doesn't change.
And the 25 feet for an ADU, that's, that works?
25 for detached.
Okay, all right. So that's my preference.
Kind, I'm not quite sure, did that mirror Salem's? I know in urban growth boundaries, the idea was to seep or be close to the, to the adjoining city. Is, does that height what Salem...
Head nod, yes.
Pardon me? Head nod, yes? Okay, and that's fine.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, because that was my big concern is, is I know there's houses on one side of a street that's in the Salem and the other side is in, in the urban, outside the city of Salem, and so that would be consistent. And the question I had, I think you already answered it, Brandon, is that height the same as if I was going to build a two-story house today? Okay, thank you.
Yep. So then setbacks, what we heard was to keep the Marion County setbacks for accessory structures for the UGBs outside of Salem, but for Salem, mirror what Salem has, which is the five feet from the property line and in Salem side yard and three feet from the property line. That's correct?
That's correct.
So that was what testimony was that in support of from both the Realtors and the home builders, and I would support that as well.
I support it too, but is that administratively easy to do, to know what, that this is special on, or, I don't know.
It will. We'll put it in code such that when you get into the ADU construction or the ADU requirements and planning, all the requirements will be there in one place. And you'll be able to walk through and see which ones apply in what instances. We'll make that as clear as possible.
So I think we're in agreement there and the one last...
Last one is parking. And so we have, okay, so the proposed option was one space for if it's interior attached and two additional if it's detached. And then the Realtors proposed one, no matter whether it's detached or detached, and the builders proposed just, yeah, just get rid of the parking requirement. And I heard, I thought I heard the Realtors, there were some Realtors that were there also, but you were sort of split, so you went with the, with just the one. So, you know, I'm frankly, and again, I don't have any research to back this up, but, well, I do have research to back this up because I did a lot of research on accessory dwelling units in the last legislative session and Brandon was there helping me with that, but I read a study by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's case study about the history and benefits of accessory dwelling units. And it talks about increasing housing supply and helping elderly and disabled persons and empty nesters. Then there was another study that was done in Oregon and it found, this was in Benton County, that on average, 2.16 persons live in the main unit and 1.2 persons in the accessory unit. I mean, essentially, you have about three people living in the whole thing. And as we heard, there's only one permit in Salem. I can't remember, it was less than 10% of the properties in the study areas built ADU. So it's not like everybody down the block is going to be building something in their backyard. And generally, the numbers of people in them are small. So, I know in my neighborhood, which everybody has two or three-car garages, many, many people do not park in their garages because they have so much stuff that they're storing in the garage. Like, we can't, we can't get either car in the garage now unless I take my Christmas tree out of the one side, my freezer out of the other side. So, we're parking three and four cars on the driveway right now, so I don't know why we would ask for people to do additional parking spots. So I guess I would be in favor of just taking out the parking requirements. I'll throw that out.
I disagree. I'd like to see one spot, and I heard Mr. Erdman say out unsightly, it looks, whatever, but I think you could always carve in another, another spot to make sure that this person, this household could get to their vehicle and get out without too much cost or effort and would probably make the whole system work better. So I was stuck on one additional, not the two. So, you want to be a tiebreaker?
Can we ask Brandon though, how do you count one or two or three? So I can get four spots in my driveway right now. If I build an ADU in my backyard, do I have to have five now if we do one additional?
No, well, you're in the city, maybe, are you?
Say you're not.
Yeah, but pretend, pretend like I'm in January and not in the city limits.
So, in the county, you'd already have, we'd have, we'd count four spaces. We might count more if you have a wide driveway. So the driveway spaces are around nine feet wide by 18 feet long, so if you have a wide...
Yeah, I can fit a fifth car on the side of the house, so...
And if you have a wide driveway, you're only required to have two with an existing dwelling.
Okay, so you'd have to have three spaces total if you have an ADU.
If you have three, and if you, if you have two in the garage and two in the driveway, or maybe you have room for a third on the driveway because you have a very wide driveway, then you, if you have additional spaces, that's fine. You're only required to have a certain number by code. The code you used that.
So that, that brings up, because I think the planning commission's recommendation was two additional, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner says zero, or Salem says zero, there's a one, but what you just said is if, I've already got four parking places, right? And you're only requiring two, why would we require an additional one? So why, why won't we look at it as saying we would need...
It's, we won't, it's not to require additional, it's to require a total. And so if you did interior ADU on the house and you're able to park in the garage, you start out with four and you've got all the spaces you'd need.
Tell me what the total is, Brandon, I'm still confused. What is the total required with zero additional and what is the total required with one additional?
With zero additional, the total required for that is two, and with one additional, the total required is three.
Okay.
And many houses start with four. And many houses start with four spaces.
That, that's my point.
Or three, if they can get.
So we're requiring, if we do one additional, we're requiring a to, a mac, a total, a minimum of three parking spots for the residents, is that right?
Total, nothing necessarily additional.
So, so what about the person that only has a one-car garage and a little narrow driveway? So now they're gonna have to find a parking place.
They start out with two, one for the garage, one for the driveway. And if the requirement is, is three, because two for the house, one for the ADU, they would have to create an additional space.
If their driveway's long, is the space one behind the other, or do they have to be side by side?
Yes, if they have like a forty-foot driveway, white, long enough for two cars, then that would count. We count that as two spaces. It is really varied when you actually look at people's properties.
If you don't make it three, then you're implying that it has to, either they don't have a car, or it has to be out in the street, and I, I don't think that's right.
Yeah, I was just thinking of a really narrow lot, but there's not gonna be room on that lot. Well, I guess they could go up if it was a single-story, but I'm, I'm more, I'm more inclined to just make sure that it's one additional, not two additional.
Right.
Yeah.
Me too.
All right, so you win, that's good.
I'm sorry, Michael, that, that opportunity's passed. No, go ahead, Brandon. All right, any others that we've left off on our list?
Well, no, I don't think so, that we're not doing, we're doing a thirty-day minimum rental deed restriction zones.
So procedure then, if there are no other further questions or anything to add? Does the public hearing approve with these changes? Where do we go?
Yeah, we, we'd send it back to, we'd ask direct staff to come back with an ordinance, right?
That is, yes. The only thing I want to clarify is that we, I have enough direction from the board today that we're the board to close the hearing, close the record on the, on the standards for manufactured housing, that when I, if I came back with, I under, that I understand where you're headed and what you want to get out of the manufactured housing. So when I return with an ordinance, we'll have options that implement what you desire today, but that there won't be a need to leave the record open, or the hearing open, to consider those details for the housing.
Correct.
And I, I believe I have enough, but I would appreciate any feedback on whether I've got the, from you, whether I've got the understanding correct.
Well, when you have the draft ordinance, you can share that with the board, we can review and make comments, right, before the meeting, correct?
That's correct. The, what you would not be able to do if you've closed a public hearing is if there was additional information you wanted submitted to the record, or if you wanted people to be able to comment on those proposed standards. But you've, you've given enough direction now that he could come back with a draft, and then if you're not satisfied with that draft, you could give further direction to go back or reopen even at that point.
So my understanding of the direction is the manufactured housing standards should be no more restrictive than what you could currently build by site-built, but should also include a component of temporality, or more recent construction, especially that would, that would include most of the basics and construction you would see today. Because maybe twenty fifteen, there is standards, in two thousand, there's standards, in nineteen eighty-five, there's standards. But the options would be kind of within those ranges, standards that are more recent, that implement this, but are, that are no more restrictive than site-built. Do I understand correctly?
I think so, yeah.
That's, yeah, I, I just don't want old manufactured homes being picked up and moved in and, yeah. Because, because if you're gonna stick build, it's gonna be new. So we need to try to get that standard there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just, just, so Brandon, what's your recommendation here? Because I'm gonna make a motion, and I want to make sure I make the motion correctly.
Recommendation is that the board approve adopting standards for, for accessory dwelling units in the, in the urban areas of the county by amending the urban zone code. And direct staff to return with an ordinance reflecting your decision today on these different options for the standards.
Okay, and are we, are we sure we don't want to leave the record open, public hearing?
We could, we could leave the record open simply to take additional information on manufactured dwellings. Could we limit it to that?
You, you could, and you could set a specific timeline. I don't know when Brandon thinks he might be able to get some information back to you.
Couple of weeks, or something like that?
Yes.
Is that way, there's other people that may want to send some information about the manufactured, that we, we'd have information that would help us with a decision? All right, so here I'm gonna try to make a motion here. First of all, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep the record open.
And close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing, keep the record open.
For standards related to manufactured housing.
Huh?
Oh, let's do three weeks because of the, I'll try to beat that date.
You have a calendar someplace. I can't get my phone open.
Somewhere, prior to the twentieth.
Let's see, what is today, twenty-ninth, so?
Let's do, can we do two weeks?
December twentieth would be three weeks.
Let's do two weeks, maybe?
Two weeks would be December thirteenth.
Yes, that would work for me.
Till eight a.m., till the day before, the evening before.
December twelfth.
Yes, December twelfth.
Okay.
Five p.m.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing, leave the record open until five o'clock on Tuesday, December twelfth, for comments regarding input in manufactured home standards. In that we direct staff to amend the Marion County urban zone code to permit accessory dwelling units. Does that work?
Let's see.
Staff would be able to return with an ordinance permitting ADUs and adopting standards.
Amending the Marion County zone code, staff would, to permit auxiliary dwelling units, and return with an ordinance for the board to review.
Correct.
I will second that motion.
All right, so I've moved and seconded. Christie, if you've got it well enough that I don't have to repeat it, you'll be able to retrieve it. All right, so I've moved and seconded to close the public hearing, keep the record open to the twelfth, and get staff to prepare the ordinance that addresses it.
And the ordinance would include the changes that we talked about.
Correct.
All right, any further discussion? Now, call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So thank you all, thank you all that sat through this morning to help us with that decision, and certainly Brandon, you too.
Thanks for your work, Brandon.
Thank you.
And everybody who's here today.
Thing we have this morning is to read the places. We'll be together in the coming week. I must say it's a bad one. I don't look forward to it, but you guys can surprise me. Tomorrow, nine o'clock to five, strategic planning session, I'll be at the Oregon Garden Trillium Room, eight ninety-five West Street, West Main Street in Silverton. Monday, eight thirty to nine, calendar review, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, five fifty-five Court Street. Tuesday, nine thirty to eleven, a work session having to do with Marion County parks update, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, five fifty-five Court Street. Tuesday, eleven thirty to one, now this is better, Board of Commissioners' Office Holiday Party, Silverton Conference Room. That's followed Tuesday, the fifth, from two to three, a community television taping. And I think we're the two doing it, if I've got it right. And then next Wednesday, the six at nine o'clock is our next regular board session. So, the one thing I wanted to talk about yet is that this is Gloria Roy's presume final, final board meeting. I did a quick math, it's somewhere over eleven hundred, eleven hundred and fifty potential meetings. I think you're probably at most of them. I hope this was a special one. I hope that you say, yeah, I remember, it was a good one. We had a nice celebration earlier in the week and kind of went over it, but what we didn't do, and, and I've got Jolene here, we didn't give you your official retirement certificate. Until you have this, you can't leave. When you get it is another question. So we'll get, we'll get Jolene to take, take a picture, but any final Board of Commissioners-related comments?
Sure, let me tell you about my favorite Board of Commissioner meetings. And I'll start with the first one, my very first Board of Commissioner meeting.
So we're not here, so we're innocent.
No, it was Gary here, Mary Paramine, and Randy Frankie.
Oh, yes.
And it was over in the courthouse, and CCTV used to have their mobile van, and they would run the wires in, the cables in through the back door, and they would have the cameras set up to, to do the filming and the broadcasting. And my very first Board of Commissioners meeting, that Joe Stone Seifer took me over to introduce us to the board, because we were not in the same building, and I'm all, you know, dressed up fancy, trying to make a good impression, and they said, we're short of volunteers for CCTV. You're the only one here that doesn't have a real function today. So I became camera two for CCTV. My very first meeting, had the headphones on. I'd get the directions from the staff, okay, pan over, zoom in.
You knew the terms already.
And they, they said that I did a great job and I had a potential second career, but unfortunately, well, or fortunately, I stuck with this one instead. Now, let me tell you about my favorite board sessions with you guys.
I'm getting nervous already.
You should. My favorite one with Commissioner Carlson was in May of two thousand fourteen. Kind of a, one of those ones where it's some very serious topics, since it was actually Foster Parent Recognition Month. And you could tell that the individual that came, it's, it's a very difficult task to take on. And Commissioner Carlson read an email that she had received from one of the young people that she had helped, because it was one of her friends, her children's friends that didn't have a place to go. So what does she do in her typical way? She says, well, I'll become a foster parent, and she took them on. And it's a prime example of Commissioner Carlson walking the talk. She just, she does things. It's like, oh, this needs to be done, and off she goes and does it. And I, you know, as a person who went through a foster system with one of my siblings, I know how important it is to have opportunities, as well as to keep your siblings together like that. I had to go back and look at the tape to make sure I wasn't grinning like an idiot in admiration, but fortunately, it only showed Commissioner Brentano doing that. The second meeting kind of involved both of you two, and that was the meeting where they first selected Commissioner Brentano. And it was kind of a last-minute thing. I'm sitting here, there was a vacancy at office, and it's, we're like one minute to go, and I'm sitting here with a staff person, and no one else is here. And it's like, okay, I'm about to sing and dance or something, as we're about to go, to go live. But fortunately, they came back in and they made a good choice, and they selected you. But that one kind of had me on pins and needles waiting for that. Commissioner.
Yeah, I heard you say brokered choice. You can't leave it with their.
Yeah, no, Commissioner Brentano. Commissioner Brentano, my favorite with yours, obviously, you can't forget the nanny state meeting, where we had a wellness topic that perhaps he didn't agree with. And he went on the offensive, thinking that the next thing we were gonna do was ban ham sandwiches. So he's never quite lived that down. I think there's probably a motive behind that. We know how many Brentano pigs there are at the fair. There also appears to be a line of ham products. If you go to his office, you can see one on the windowsill there. And I have heard him referred to as Ham Brentano, but I think that that was definitely a little bit of pork barrel politics going on. My favorite meetings with Commissioner Cameron, he was appointed and thrown right into the budget meetings.
Wait, was he unanimous or anything?
Yeah, he was.
What?
The selection of it, the selection of it. But, you know, he, he came in right as we're approving the budget that year, and he's going through this, looking at all the programs, all the services the county provides. And he's like, I'm having to make decisions on these budgets, and I really don't know anything about these. And he, I saw him commit himself from that point forward to go around, to do the ride-arounds, to, to go out and see the services, and to really learn what the county does, so he could do a better job. But that's not my favorite meeting. My favorite meeting that involved you was a day that your father came, and he stayed, you know, he came in into the middle of the meeting, and you got up and you went over and you gave him a big old hug and a greeting. And afterwards, I, you know, I knew, I thought that he perhaps had, was coming for a visit from a different state. I knew that you'd grown up in a, a different state, and maybe he was just coming in for a visit from out of town. And I was like, oh, no, he lives in Marion County. He was just coming here for the day to pick up something. And just seeing that relationship that you had with your dad, and just the warmth that you were expressing in that, I just found that to be just a, a really moving moment, and showed a lot of your personality in that. So those are my favorite board meetings with this group of commissioners. I have served seventeen commissioners over my time.
Oh, are we the best, are we?
This, yes.
Of course, we're the best.
You're my favorites. You're my favorites, and John has obviously been an extremely valuable to the county. And the fact that someone of John Latimer's reputation, as we've heard recently, comes to work for Marion County and stays, says a lot. And I'd be remiss if I didn't also send my sincere appreciation out to an individual that's worked extremely hard for the county. We haven't always agreed, but we've agreed on one thing, and that's to do good things for Marion County, and that's Jan Fritz, our deputy county administrator. And I think that the hard work that the two of us put in to being able to work together, I've really appreciated her, and, and she, again, is gonna be an individual that I'll miss working with. So those are my comments.
That was so great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you know, there are lawyers, and there are lawyers. Gloria has done some things that I've not seen any of the other legal counsels do in a credible way. I mean, she's done some contracts that required really deep thinking and an understanding of the reality of the political interactions of various groups. I'm thinking, for example, of the contract for the CCO. Without Gloria's involvement in that, we, we would not have become the only CCO with commissioners on the board, which I think is extremely important. The other, the, she did not create the leases and subleases for the Oregon Garden. It was done by Mike.
Hanson.
Hanson.
No, it's Mike, was it Mike Hanson?
No, Mike, what's Mike?
Mike Hanson.
Yeah, Mike Hanson, who was before.
Joe.
Joe.
Joe, and then, and, but nobody could, I, I understand that Mike created that to save the county and save the board, because the bonds were, if I'd have been here, I'd have argued against them, but that's another thing. It's a different board. But only Gloria could explain that thing, so people could understand it. And, and then helping us with those management agreements, and that was phenomenal. I, it's still, it probably needs work, and I think we'll probably ask Gloria to help us in the future with some things. Because she has not just great legal knowledge, particularly about local government law, but a sense of how it really works in the real world. And, and that's not always something that's evident in, in other legal counsels, I don't think. So thank you, Gloria.
Absolutely. You, you thought of the same two things that I was thinking of. I was thinking, well, what were my two favorite meetings with Gloria? And the, one of them that I just vividly remember is when I walked in, it was the Swamp Box Conference Room, and the entire whiteboard was covered with boxes and a flow chart about how the Oregon Garden agreements fit together. So now when anybody asks me, so tell me about how the Oregon Garden agreements are structured, I said, you know, our legal counsel, like, filled up a whole whiteboard of boxes. I don't remember it exactly, but. I don't remember it exactly, but I just know it's really complicated. And she was able to explain all of that to us. And in addition to the CCO agreement, there is a written agreement, the, really, the only things that counties got in statute when healthcare reform was done at the legislature was the requirement, which OHA hasn't held every CCO to, that there'd be a written agreement between the CCO and the counties. And there were counties that did it on one sheet of paper with about three sentences, a number of counties that did that. Ours was something like 12 pages long, because we sat down and we outlined all of the interests that we had, that we wanted to maintain, where the dollars would be blended between the Medicaid dollars and the dollars that we had with the county, and with great specificity felt, spelled that out. And that agreement has helped us so many times, and is going to continue to help us as we do the work and, and as leadership changes and institutional memory goes away, you know, that's solidified. So those are just two examples of Gloria's great work.
So I guess we're not going to give her the retirement certificate? That's the only thing I can figure out. Well, she was in the military. What's the form you get when you, honorable discharge?
DD-214.
I don't see that on here, but it's rather similar. Shoot. All right, let's just, I think I'll adjourn. Should I adjourn the meeting first, or?
No, it's not adjourned.
All right, let's not.
Let's do this on camera.
All right, yeah, this is a sample. Shoot. Not for a lawyer.
Ready? One, two. And one more, one more.
Now I can. Is there anything further anybody wants to announce, confess, or?
I don't think we can talk this.
All right, we're done. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.